Council meeting of March 6, 2025. To order, roll call please.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sismarcy? Alderman Hartwoods?
Here.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Here.
Alderman Williams?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Here, I declare a quorum. Come on in. So, before we do the pledge, this week is Girl Scout Week. It's observed nationally from March 9th to 15th, 2025. They are celebrating 113 years of making the world a better place. Thank you to Wooddale Girl Scout Troop 56669 for leading us this evening. They're going to lead us into pledge. Are they all in?
Yep, now they are, yes.
Okay.
Are your girls' flags?
Where? Flag's over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does somebody want to speak at the podium? Say a few words on behalf of the Girl Scouts?
Thank you very much for having us this year. Troop 56669 is very appreciative. This is our second year of having Girl Scouts back in Wooddale. We have nearly 30 girls this year. We're so happy to have grown our troop so much. The girls this year have done a lot of things already. They have participated in coding, at Code Ninja classes, to learn to work on their STEM skills. They have worked with the DuPage County Animal Shelter to learn how to take care of animals. They did service projects with Feed My Starving Children.
Oh, nice.
They also worked on cybersecurity with the Wooddale Library. They learned how to be detectives. They worked on making games, staying fit, and exploring the outdoors at the woodlands. It is so wonderful to have the support of the community. And the girls have cookies to donate to the police. That we got money when we were selling cookies, so if you'd like to give them to the police officers.
Oh, very nice.
Cookie Monster!
So the girls say thank you for the police keeping us safe.
How many pounds do you think that is?
About 40 pounds?
40 pounds. You know where it's gonna go.
And so thank you again. The girls will be selling cookies at the Walgreens in Itasca on Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 if anyone needs any Girl Scout cookies. But thank you again for being so supportive. It's wonderful that the girls have a space where they can learn to be strong, to explore, and to see the possibilities. And thank you for supporting us in the Wooddale community.
Thank you very much. They're a little shy. Thank you, girls. Thank you. Thanks for being here. He is. That's nice.
I did tell them, Jason, can you grab a few cookies? We have some interesting party now. Hey, Aaron. Aaron, how much are they a box?
Six bucks.
Man, inflation. I got 40. I was warned.
No, I can't sell those. That's a no-no.
We have cookies for sale for anybody who wants cookies.
Sure. Just give me whatever you've got. I think they do, but I don't know if they have been... I didn't get it.
Yeah. I sent the judaums.
I'll read it. She asked me if I... Again, thank you to the Girl Scouts. First up, we need a motion to approve the minutes of February 20th, regular city council minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any questions, comments, or corrections? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Before we go to citizens, I do have one written communique from the Wooddale Lions Club. Dear Mayor, Police, and City Council, Wooddale Lions Club known for its unwavering commitment to community service since chartering in 1944, is organizing an annual fundraising event with a focus addressing site, sound, and educational support, raising funds. We aim to cover the cost of eye exam, eyeglasses, hearing tests, diabetes, education, and college scholarships. Collaborating closely with the Wooddale School District 7, Wooddale School District 100... Nope, I almost lost my note. And residents. I made it smaller. Who needs help? The Lions Club strives to remove financial burden to essential eye care. What is going on here? There we go. Sorry, it's not my phone. Where are we? Okay. They provide free eye exams and prescription glasses if needed at no cost to families. By combining the crucial causes, the Lions Club looks to have a significant impact on the well-being of the Wooddale community. The annual fundraising events serve as a platform to raise awareness, generate funds, attract new members, and garner support to sustain their mission. We respectfully request permission to hold our third annual Split the Pot Raffle at Prairie 2025. The funds raised will help further our mission and help ensure a brighter future for the Wooddale community. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to call me directly. President Arthur Woods, Lions Club. Do we have motion?
I'll make the motion.
Go to the motion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's taken care of. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir, if you'd go to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Brad Townsend. I live at 196 North Central here in Wooddale, a longtime resident. My topic that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight has to do with the planned water tower that is scheduled to be over at the Central and Irving Park intersection. I think it's the northwest corner of it. I want to first say, though, that as far as high-quality water, I mean, all the time I've ever lived here in Wooddale, it's been great. I think the city council and the other city councils before have done a great job, along with staff and others, to ensure that, you know, we have high-quality and reliable water. And you could argue that that may be the most important thing you do of all the things that come before you during your time serving. But what I'm bringing to your attention here is how you're doing it and where you're doing it. In this case, having the water tower be moved from where it is now or being replaced by one at this location, you know, it may meet a technical requirement, but it doesn't really meet the community requirement. And community requirement, what I mean by that is how it affects the surrounding neighborhoods, the various uses of that area. There's a lot of residential in that area on both the north and south side of Irving Park Road. Now, I personally may be focused on Ward 1, but Ward 4 is also affected by this. To put a gigantic 14-story-plus utility structure right in the middle of all that that can be seen for at least, you know, a mile, you know, it's just outrageous. You know, it'll even dwarf the six-story Radcliffe Senior Living Center that's right there that also takes up a lot of space. But the height of this, you know, will be more than double that. It's just almost hard to fathom when you look at the plans for that and how it might look. So it's going to be a visual blight, and you simply can't not see it. You can't unsee that once it's there. And even though we can see it from south looking north from where I live, even the people on the north side in Ward 4, a shadow will be cast on them from this thing. So I just want to say that in my conversations with city officials, I appreciate, you know, what public work staff and others have presented to me as far as ideas to mitigate the impact of this thing, landscaping and fencing around the property, you know, try to make it look as good as you possibly can. That's all good. And I also understand that there are no plans for floodlights or advertising that would be on this structure that would add, you know, to the light pollution that's already being provided in generous quantities by the Radcliffe, the Metro Commuter Lot, and some other nearby businesses. So hopefully that would be the case. But if it's there, that just doesn't resolve the fact that the monstrosity would be seen by all, day and night. So what I'd like to do is, Mayor, and Clerk, and the others, if I could give this to you... I think there's enough here for everybody if you want to look at it. I went ahead and took views of what this might look like. So I went around, took some photos of various locations, east, west, straight south, looking toward this property. And I even went up on Irving Park and took a shot, a photo of it, looking at the site, you know, as it might be seen from Irving Park Road. And I can't say that the water tower that I superimposed on that is... Here, maybe I should... I've got to move on this quickly here. You only have so much time for this. Here. I can't say that it's absolutely scientifically to scale, but, you know, I plum-bobbed it, and it's pretty close to what it might look like. Can't be missed. So other negative byproducts I'd like to say about this beyond what I show in those images and what I have said already is that it creates a conflict of land use, you know, between a monumental public utility and the peaceful enjoyment by residents of the neighborhoods. And that's always been something that I thought Wooddale stood for. It has, and hopefully will continue. And changing that site from commercial zoning to public use negates the possibility for that property to generate tax revenues of property or sales. So that's a loss there. And it's likely to diminish to some measure the property value for everyone impacted that's around that property, particularly residential. So I just want to say that that kind of sums up my view about the tower project, and my neighbors share this. But my neighbors didn't know anything about this. Lack of community information, I think, was appalling on this particular project. No neighbor except one that I had conversations with, and I've had dozens of conversations, knew anything about the tower project. And that person found out by going to the town hall meeting that was back in the fall. I've been to a lot of those. I didn't happen to go to the one this time, but they said that it was talked about, and there was a rendering there. But at the same time, one of the publications that I enjoy reading, the Wooddale Community Newsletter, high-quality, out of good information, I don't remember seeing anything in there, not the last one or the one before that. And yet, I understand from talking to staff and elected officials here that this project has been underway for at least a year, maybe a year and a half, moving it along through different stages of the process, you know, leading up to the engineering design and then plans for going out for bid and all that. So all I can tell you is that when you're talking about a major project like this, it seems to me like it would be the right thing to let the public know and do everything you can to inform them about it. So I want to hand out the second item here, if I can also bring this up. I mentioned neighbors. So I have talked to a lot of neighbors, and there's... It's a petition. He says a copy of the petition. The petition is actually still being circulated because there's more people that want to sign it. They just weren't available for one reason or another over the last several days. So the original one, I'm going to continue, and there's another one being circulated that I want to bring to your attention as soon as I can. But they're all basically saying to you that they object to this site. I can't think of anybody that gave me, at least as a resident, that gave me a good reason why I was wrong or the others were wrong, and that we should have that there. So my final comment, Mayor Alderman, is please reconsider the location of this site before it's too late. There's bound to be other places where you could put this, where you could still meet those high-quality water standards for distribution, water pressure, and everything else, reliability, without having to be at that particular location right on Irving Park Road with... being presented to the neighborhoods all around there. Perhaps the idea is that one of the residents I talked to, Bob, well, two of them, Bob and Gloria Olson, Bob, I think, sent a letter. I don't know if you've received it yet, Mayor, but he said that he was going to get that to you and maybe to the Alderman Messina, that he had a couple of suggestions for alternate sites because he also objected to this. And he mentioned, and I'm sure you probably remember this, possibly behind the city hall by the water park, that open space back there. He also mentions property behind the fire station on Wooddale Road. He thinks there's some properties in there. And another one that a couple of residents brought to my attention that I'm passing on to you is, you know, what about that basin straight east on Potter near Spruce, stormwater basin there, maybe right up next to Route 83? Nobody's going to have any objection, I believe, to having a water tower that they go past. And also, you could, you know, be publicizing the city of Wooddale there. The properties to the north there are businesses in Bensonville that I don't see where they would have any particular concern about this. There are some townhomes down there, I acknowledge, but the impact and the location that you now are planning to do just affects a lot more people and a lot more longtime residents. And so please reconsider this just for the good of not only our neighborhood, but for the entire community. And that's all I have to present for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other residents? Okay, nothing under Mayor's report. Mr. Murmas, anything under Manager's report?
Just one quick item. With spring right around the corner, we want to remind the residents that registration is now open for the city's senior disabled grass-cutting program. Visit the city's website or call the Public Works Department if you're interested in the program. Their number is 630-350-3530. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Nothing under consent agenda. Committee Chairman reports planning and zoning. Alderman Catalano?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety. Alderman Currielli?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public works. Alderman Arty Woods?
One report, Mayor. Resolution authorizing funding for Phase 2 engineering services for the Elizabeth Drive Bridge reconstruction project. That is my motion.
Second.
Your motion and a second. Questions? Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, maybe there's a question for Director. As far as funding, are we getting funding from the federal government on this?
Mr. Lang?
So we've actually been awarded two funding sources for the bridge reconstruction project. We've received SDP bridge funds, Surface Transportation Program bridge funds, and special program bridge funds, which is administered through IDOT. So one is a federal funding source, one is a state funding source, both administered by IDOT. They pick up 75% to 80% cost of right-of-way acquisition, Phase 1, Phase 2 engineering, construction engineering, and construction.
And with all the cutbacks, what's going on right now in the federal government, you don't see that being jeopardized?
No, from all of our contacts at the federal agencies, they're proceeding with the funding at this time.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
I got five. Did you get everybody? I missed a couple.
I got 12.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
And that passes. Thank you very much. Finance Administration, Alderwoman Ames?
No report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, nothing for airport noise and stormwater commission. Mr. Bond has told me... Alderman Messina, you got a comment?
It was under other business, right?
Yeah?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to do a motion to reconsider the water tower placement based on Mr. Townsend's comments.
Second. Can we do that?
That was the last council meeting, right, Alan? When it passed? Or Stacy, was the special use, was it the last council meeting?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Okay. Reconsider. Okay, any follow-up? Alderman Messina, or just motion to reconsider?
No, I think I'll take some accountability for myself in, you know, not maybe communicating as well as I probably normally would. But I would say I know there were some reasons on why. I personally want to see this back up because I know the first time it was majority not at that location. And then the second time, something occurred that the majority of the council flipped to the site that we're at today. So I don't think it was a majority both times at both meetings when I went back and looked at the notes. So I think it's warranted based on the fact that there seemed to be consensus that there was a different location, and then it kind of flipped to another location. So that's it.
Any other comments? All right, we have a motion to reconsider. Roll call.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
No.
Alderman Arty Woods?
No.
Alderwoman Ames?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Okay, in light of the information, let's have a motion to reconsider. Yes. Okay. All right, next. Approval of list of bills. Alderwoman Ames?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for March 6, 2025, for $601,003.68. That is my motion.
Second. Okay. Any questions on the bills? Arty, go ahead. Alderman Arty Woods?
Either for Brad, or for Brad since Manager's busy. The $21,408 for upland design, was that the total amount for their design services for the initial design work, or is that a partial cost? What was that? I know when we were looking at different vendors, we were adjusting the requirements, and that kind of lowered the cost.
Yeah, it's my understanding that that's for the work that they performed to date.
I believe the total contract was, was it 40, 45, somewhere there?
50, yeah. So it was quite a bit more than the 41s. That was the work performed to date.
So this is the final payment towards that work?
I believe it's the first payment.
First payment.
First payment.
Thank you.
First payment, yeah.
Any other questions?
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, we have no ticket session. I am being referred. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye.